If everybody can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chief White, would you do the honors?
And I see Bailey came in.
Yeah, Bailey.
And that, and Bailey's trainer.
Where is he?
Oh.
Oh, okay. Bailey's butler, there we go.
I'm sure Bailey's not the trainer. Counsel, as you're aware, our 15-year anniversary of September 11th is approaching this Sunday, and we've brought, as we always do, the traveling memorial. We were awarded a piece of medal from the World Trade Center several years ago and crafted this memorial. Take it to school events and other locations that asked for it. This Sunday at Rock and Brews at 3:30 is a dedication of a police and fire memorial that will honor and memorialize the line of duty deaths of Seminole County, all law enforcement, and all firefighters. So that's a special event we've been invited to participate.
Three o'clock?
Yeah, it starts at 3:30. I'd get there about 3:00, 3:15. So just before we go to the Lord and Prayer, just a reminder of the events of that tragic and fateful day. Over 70 nationalities were reflected in the victims that were lost, 6,000 people injured, 2,977 total victims, of which 2,753 victims at the World Trade Centers, 184 victims from the Pentagon, 40 victims from Shanksville, Pennsylvania. Included in those numbers are 343 FDNY firefighters, 37 Port Authority police, 23 New York police officers, and eight private EMS personnel. So a very difficult weekend for a lot of folks. If you would, please join me in a word of prayer at this time. Father God, as we approach this 15-year anniversary date, we're reminded of just how precious life is. And, Lord, we ask that you comfort all the family, the friends, the coworkers, our nation, our elected officials, our veterans, our first responders, and remind us of all we do to secure our nation and keep us safe. And we just pray the blessings on these families that they have to endure this special anniversary date. And, Lord, we ask that you guide and protect our great nation in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. This time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. It is approximately 6:35. We have all members of council present this evening. Our first order of business is our public hearing to adopt the fiscal year 1516 tax rates and budget. So just bear with me a second. Let me get over to the resolution. Mr. Cobb, can you give us an introduction, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the City Council is asked to conduct the first of two public hearings regarding the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget. I've got just a very short PowerPoint here for you. Lynn, if you could go to the next slide. As you know, and we started this process back in March, this is not something, this is a, an endeavor that requires a lot of attention and a lot of hands. These are some special folks. We call them the Budget Team. I'd like to recognize them. Ms. Hayes, our Management Services Director, Ms. Bigelow, who's no longer with us, but she was deeply involved, as well as Ms. Jones in the Finance Department, Ms. Cole from Public Works, Mr. Beldon from Recreation and Parks, and Ms. Rodriguez, who started out in Public Works, was now part of Management Services, as well as all of our department heads and our managers and our supervisors. They've all contributed to the development of this budget, and I wanted to give them some special recognition. Just to give you a few highlights about the budget, it is balanced at 5.0566 mils. We were able to reduce the general obligation bond millage to 0.2254. That gives us a total millage of 5.2820, and this is the same as the 2015-16 millage. We were able to maintain our, the 2015-16 level of service, as well as we satisfied the 15 percent reserve fund balance requirement. The budget includes a 2 percent salary increase for our employees. That includes bargaining unit as well as general employees. And for the first time in many years, we were actually able to give a wage increase to our seasonal employees. There is funding for the Assistant City Manager and the Public Information Officer positions. These are positions that have been in prior budgets, but they weren't funded. We were able to fund them this year. We also have funding for an IT Director, a police officer, and building custoding positions in the Recreation and Parks Department. These positions will be, the funding begins January 1st of 2017. We were able to fully fund our health program, our vehicle replacement program, as well as our landscaping and mowing program. We were able to fund 5.7 miles of street resurfacing in our resurfacing program, as well as the next phase of the implementation of our IT Master Plan capital program. Tonight, the City Council is asked to adopt Resolutions 3278 and 3279, as well as to schedule the second public hearing for September 19th, 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Groot, can you read Resolution 3278-16 by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A resolution establishing the millage rates to be levied for fiscal year 2016-2017 by City of Oviedo City Government, adopting the millage rates for the 2016-2017 fiscal year for the City of Oviedo at the overall rate of 5.2820 mils, with 5.0566 mils for the city's operations, and 0.2254 mils for payment on the 2003 general obligation bond issue, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent, and providing for implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, scrivener's errors, conflicts, severability, and ineffective date. That's the resolution by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. I'd just like to state that the tentative millage rate of 5.0566 mils is a revenue increase of 5.18 percent compared to the rollback rate of 4.8074 mils. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address counsel at this time on the budget? Not on the items that I have written requests for? We'll get to that in a little bit. Hearing none, I will close the public comment portion and ask that Mr. Groot read the Resolution Number 3278-16, which is the tentative millage levy resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A resolution adopting the City of Oviedo's annual operating budget for the 2016-2017 fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2016, and ending September 30, 2017, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent, and providing for implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, scrivener's errors, conflicts, severability, and ineffective date. And that's the resolution by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 3278-16.
Sub moved. Second.
Motion and second. Sounded like Councilman Hicken got in under the wire. Any discussion?
Deputy Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I think Ms. Hayes wants to mention something.
Did you, did you say it over me? I think he beat you by just a little bit. That's Robin.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. May I request that the motion includes the millage rate and the percent above the rollback, as well as the general obligation, just for clarification, for the Department of Revenue?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Do you want me to actually read that, Robin? Do you want me to actually ask for the motion again with that in it?
Would you, sir?
It would be my pleasure.
Thank you, sir.
It's not the way it is written here.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'll make sure it's corrected for the 19.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt a tentative millage rate levy resolution Number 3278-16, and announce that the tentative millage rate will be set at 5.0566 mils, which is 5.8 percent higher than the rollback rate of 4.8704 mils, and combined with the general obligation bond issue of .2254 mils, the overall millage rate is 5.282 mils. That is the motion.
I amend the motion to be that motion. Second.
You have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, any discussion?
Thanks to staff, such a great job, and everyone else. Appreciate it.
Councilman Hicken?
I agree.
Councilman Braden?
Good.
Councilwoman?
Good job, everyone.
Excellent. With that being said, all those in favor of the motion on the table to adopt, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, Mr. Groot, can you please read Budget Resolution Number 3279-16 by title only? 3279-16 is what it says in.
I didn't read that. I did read that. I read both of them. You want me to read it again, Mr. Mayor?
According to, I'm just following my sheet here, so.
Yes, sir.
If my sheet is in error, I can assure you that I know how to read. We'll have to have that discussion separately.
Let's just do it separately. You're right. A resolution adopting the City of Oviedo's annual operating budget for the 2016-2017 fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2016, and ending September 30, 2017, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent, and providing for implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, scrivener's errors, conflicts, severability, and ineffective date. That's the resolution by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 3279-16, which would be adopting the fiscal year 2016-17 tentative annual budget of $61,393,812 net of inter-fund transfers.
Sub moved.
Second.
Motion second. Deputy Mayor?
Nothing.
No? Councilman?
Good.
Councilman Braden?
Good.
Councilwoman?
Good.
Excellent. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. So we will close the public hearing for this evening on the first reading of the budget and millage rate, and move to, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for Monday, September 19th, 2016, here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council Chambers at 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, at approximately 6:30 PM.
Sub moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion?
Good.
Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. All righty. Moving along, we're up to our ceremonial items. First one that we have up is Florida Police Chiefs Association Award. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you.
Mayor, Chief Chudnow has a presentation.
We'll turn it over to the chief. Are we presenting this to Bailey?
Well, Bailey's already received this, so.
Oh, okay.
Well, I should, actually Bailey received the bone at the.
Oh, okay.
All right. Each year, the Florida Police Chiefs Association has an award for innovation in policing. It's done by size agencies. We submitted this year our K-9 program at the middle school with Bailey and Officer Hanau. And when we first brought the idea, if you don't know, this is, I can always mess up your mind.
Principal.
The principal at Jackson Heights Middle School.
Principal Sarah is just much easier.
We came, Officer Hanau and Lieutenant Capatio came to me with the idea about bringing Bailey, who is obviously not your, obviously, street canine, came with the idea. We brought it to her, and went then to the executive director of the middle schools, who was in favor of the idea. Then it went to legal, and we kind of got our hopes down. It stayed there a while, but eventually it came out, and Bailey is now a, probably one of the most recognizable members of the staff at Jackson Heights Middle. So we submitted that, and the Chiefs of Police Awards Committee awarded our, our program from the seven others that were nominated for agencies of our size, from 25 to 75 personnel, the winners of the award for this year.
Great. Congratulations, guys. Good job.
And you see Bailey is not really excited about all that.
Hey, he's been in middle school all day. Come on. Yeah. Tough week.
And if you don't mind, I'm going to let you take a look at the question, how it helps the school.
Sure, thank you.
But does anybody know Officer Hanau's name? I am just curious.
I am definitely a behind-the-scenes guy.
Yeah, I see that. It's all about Bailey.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Chief. It has been an honor, and we do absolutely love Bailey. And just this morning, I looked out the window, and there was this sea of kids. I'm like, what are they doing? They were all down on the ground, petting Bailey. But really, it's, she has helped us reach some of the kids that are even harder to reach, and it also has shined a positive light on law enforcement. And in these difficult times, it's very nice to have that great relationship with law enforcement and the City of Oviedo Police and Jackson Heights students, and make those connections that we're all there for the kids, including Bailey. So thank you, Chief, and thank you, Officer Hanau and Bailey.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Great job.
Thank you, Sarah.
See you, Bailey.
You're ready to go.
Thank you.
All righty, moving right along. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes from, let me just see which meetings. August 15th, 2016, regular sessions, the pleasure of council.
Make motion without minutes from Monday, August 15th, August 16th?
Second. Motion second. Any discussion?
Okay.
Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number four on our agenda tonight. That is our public comment portion of our meeting. I do have a couple of written requests. And the first request, I'll just take them in the order they were placed here, is from Betsy, we just need your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes.
Sure. Betsy Jewell, 730 South Lake Clear Circle, Oviedo. Kind Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here on behalf of the Stentstrom SAC Committee. That's the School Advisory Council. We are here to ask for your consideration to approve the budget to move forward with the car line, road construction that we've been hoping for, for as long as I've been there, and my kids have been there, and that's, oh, seven years now. I don't think it's a secret to anyone, but it's a traffic hazard for the city and the community. And while the car line will end up on Seminole County public schools' property, the problem starts on the city road. Mitchell Hammock is a hazard for the community members and anyone else in the city who goes through that area after school at dismissal time, and I know you already know this. The growth of Oviedo, along with the out-of-zone students that we're seeing, I mean, Stentstrom, again, my kids have been at Stentstrom for seven years. We have, our enrollment is an all-time high. We have so many kids coming into the area, they don't have buses. And while the school was built as a neighborhood school with the intention of kids walking and biking, if I'm being perfectly honest, there is no way I'm letting my 10-year-old walk or bike down Mitchell Hammock. There's not enough space between the sidewalk and the road. The easement is too narrow. There's no barrier. There's no fence. It's not going to happen. So I have to drive him. I have no choice. He begs me every day to walk or ride, but he can't. So unfortunately, I'm one of those cars that sits in that car line all week long. It's just, it's unsafe. It's inconvenient for people who live in the community and don't have kids. It's inconvenient for parents who have to sit in the car line. And I know that we have a temporary solution, and RTS is kind enough to allow us to queue up the cars in there. Now we require additional Oviedo Police Department resources to help direct traffic through there. So it's just a domino effect. Our principal has informed us about the meetings that have been happening, the discussions that have been occurring. We understand that it's in the works, but, you know, if it all boils down to money, and I don't know if that's what it is, I would hope that our children's safety would be worth what you have to spend to make this happen. Thank you.
Next form I have is from Jennifer Walsh. And Jennifer, again, just your name and address for the record first. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Walsh. I live on 477 East Bridge Drive in Kingsbridge East. I have two children. One goes to Stentstrom, the other goes to Jackson Heights Middle School. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, I'm a little closer now. Okay, great. I'm going to reiterate a lot of what Betsy said, and I'll try to go quickly. I did kind of script this for myself so that I could keep on topic. I am aware that there are negotiations, conversations happening as far as the proposed project. It's my understanding that Commissioner DeLore is actually looking into funding some of the fiber optic portion of the project, which we, I was glad to hear. I believe that the funding for the remainder of this project should be supported for this, by the city for the following reasons. Taxes, the half-cent sales tax increase is shared with the school board, the city municipalities, which you all already know, and the county. The recent tax base generated is higher and above, is my understanding, the budgeted amount. In other words, there's more money than was previously projected. As parents, we live in Kingsbridge East, Kingsbridge West, Alafer Woods. We pay both city and county taxes because we're within those city limits. All the recent businesses that are being built around us must be generating a tax base as well, therefore contributing also to the taxes, as, I mean, the traffic, as we all know. As Betsy alluded, the reformation has graciously allowed parents to utilize the driveway on the property to set up a car line provided by, provided in OPD officers there to direct traffic. The reformation recently paid $70,000 to resurface their driveway to do, to the, for the children to use the, to resurface it in order for the children to get through there, as well as for their own benefit, obviously. But I think that, that's an unruly cost for somebody who's allowing us to use their private property. The reformation has neither received nor asked for anything in return. Not to mention, we are, as the city, we're paying a police officer to be there at the time of dismissal. 510 families out of 650 students bring their children to Stentstrom every day. They are often single rider, so they're coming in a car, as Betsy mentioned. This is no longer a walking, biking school, as it was previously. There's also overflow for fourth and fifth graders coming from other schools. Those parents have to transport those, those students, thus more cars. I see the problem is growth, traffic will continue to increase. I'm concerned, as a parent, as a community member, even when it's not pickup time, it's becoming continually dangerous for, for the students and parents and community at large. No school zone is posted here, no proposed changes in speed limits that I'm aware of. 419 has a school zone, but that was funded by the county because that's a county road, as you all know. Businesses are, continue to be built on Mitchell Hammock and Lockwood. There's no homes. These are entrances, but many don't have turn lanes. So that's, again, thus building more traffic, more issues with a current speed limit of 45, which, let's be honest, it's more like 50 or 55. It's a major safety issue, as Betsy's already mentioned. I asked the City of Oviedo, would they like to open a traffic investigation on Mitchell Hammock if that already hasn't been done? I don't know. I know that the cost of that is exorbitant, so I wouldn't highly recommend it that, but maybe it's already been done. I don't know.
Jennifer, I do need you to wrap it up.
Okay. The logical solution is to fund a safer way for traffic to flow at the intersection of Mitchell Hammock and Alafer Woods Boulevard, while still allowing students to ride and leave safely from school. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb, can you just give us a very brief synopsis of the scenario at Stentstrom?
Yes, Mayor.
More money in the sales tax. Well, we know that's not true yet. County's paying for the fiber optic. That's 10 to 20K when they originally were going to pay for half of it, half of this And then, Chief, you'll answer county school, the school zone out at Stentstrom, out at Parton. If I'm not mistaken, didn't they take that down?
It's not a school, it's not a school zone.
Yeah, that's what I thought. There used to be, and then they took it down because it was.
Never was.
Right, it used to be a flashing light, though, a speed limit, and they took that thing down.
The yellow diamond, the handle, the yellow diamond sign in Visser.
Oh, okay.
That's all it is. It's not, it's not East Blue Zone.
All right. Let's, Brian, why don't you just, brief synopsis, so that way they can leave with some information, and then we'll, you'll have to update council at a later date.
Yes, Mayor. As, as you mentioned, previous meetings had, the idea was that there would be a cost share. And the last meeting we had, we found out that it was expected that the city would be funding the entire, the project, or the city's portion of the project. The city's portion of the project currently is estimated 200, over $269,000. And that is to build the driveway access onto Mitchell Hammock Road. The school board would then pick up their property line and complete the Serpentine driveway within the, within the school property. We questioned the bid that was got by the school board, and so Mr. Wyatt has taken the plans and has taken them to one of our contractors. And we're, they are currently preparing a cost estimate for them to perform the work. And we're waiting for that cost estimate to come back. We believe it will be less than $269,000.
Okay. Mr. Cobb, is it fair to say that the City of Oviedo has been fully committed to this project since it was first brought up by, well, many over the years, but yourself and myself sat in on the original meeting two or three years ago?
Yes, sir. Our staff even helped with brainstorming the solutions. So we have been very involved in the project.
Is it also fair, fair to say that we were under the assumption of a cost share that was just recently, within the last three weeks, four weeks, we were told that that no longer exists, and that we were ready to move forward?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wyatt, when do you expect those numbers to be back? Just ballpark.
Next week.
All right, so by the end of the month, let's say. All right, that's fair. Chief Chudnow, at our last meeting, didn't I not hear you say that an officer will still be needed to be out on Mitchell Hammock Road and guide parents into that gated area because of the way the entrance is being constructed?
That's possibility at least to start.
Right, okay.
Probably the beginning of each school year, if you need parents and, and use the traffic flows inside of the, to and inside of the school.
Did I also not see an email bandied about where I asked you how many people are actually stacking at RTS, and it's approximately 40 a day?
Approximately 40, 45 a day, sorry to be there at RTS.
Mr. Cobb, aren't we also questioning the school district on the placement of the fence because the way they currently have it placed, there'd have to be a gate on Mitchell Hammock Road, which will make them have to send an employee out to unlock the gate, which isn't going to occur until 10 or 15 minutes before dismissal? And the way the school board currently has it designed, aren't we afraid that the traffic's going to be stacking back out on Mitchell Hammock Road?
That isn't a concern. The location of the gate currently is up next to the right of way. Obviously, we've recommended that the gate be located closer into the school to allow some stacking within the property. But it would require, we've got, I think we estimated we have around 300 feet there on the taper. That's not going to stack a lot of cars, to be honest. So there could, there could be a situation there if folks are allowed to, if a lot of folks show up ahead of time before the gate is opened, and it could still fall out into Mitchell Hammock Road.
Is there anything I missed, Mr. Cobb, that you could add to the conversation? I don't want the ladies to leave and not think that we're not trying to work on this. And, you know, I apologize to the City Council. I don't know how up to speed you've gotten everybody. I know they're all aware it's being worked on.
All right, no, sir. That is it. Right now, we are trying to get a better estimate of the project cost, and as soon as those come in, then we'll be able to sit down and, and look at our sales tax revenues and see how we can get the, get the project completed.
And as far as our commitment to school safety, didn't I sit on this, counsel, back in 2003 or '04, we commissioned about a $400,000 school safety zone study that we used to get grants?
We, yes, sir, we did. We commissioned a school safety zone study, and we've been able to use that study to commission grants from DOT for Jackson Heights Middle School, as well as Lotton Elementary School. Construction of sidewalks is called safe routes to school. I think the third priority was Oviedo High School, which is probably the next one we'll pursue.
Right. Yeah, it might have been, and I don't think it was 400, now that I'm thinking about it, but I remember it. It's around here somewhere.
We've, we've been able to leverage, using that study, we've been able to leverage over $1 million in state monies.
All right.
Would it be fair to say maybe this presentation also needs to go to the school board and ask them to fulfill their fair share that they committed to?
Yes, Mr. Cobb.
Would it be fair to say that, that maybe, say that we've committed to our fair share from day one, and that over the past month, that the school board has not stood up to their fair share, that they were, I'm gonna say, alluding, whatever we wanna use, but I'll be frank and say that...
It was the county that pulled out.
It was the county, I apologize.
Now, the school district has, has always committed to construct the driveway within their property.
Than the county, to go to the county, to stand up to their fair share and do their, what they've said from the beginning they would do? And maybe that's something, another area that groups should go. Again, we, you know, if it's $250,000, we've committed 125 in our mind that we've said we'll pay. We're ready, we're in, from day one, from two years ago till now. So, you know, about a month ago, it seems that the county said, "We're gonna take 100,000 off the table at the last minute," approximately. With a lot, I'll use the fiber optic guys, they're 20,000 offering back, but would it be fair to say that that's a...
Basically, the commissioner explained that there were no county roadways involved, and therefore the county funds couldn't be used. That's how he explained it. So...
Well, that one's in sales tax, again, we, that, our little portion of it, because it's, the way it's split doesn't sound like the way it's really split.
We get 2%.
We get 2% of that money. We don't get a lot of money that we actually get. It splits 50% to the county, am I right? 25% to the school board, and then the rest of the cities all split the 25. So the rest of, the seven cities split 25 based on population. So we get our little portion that we get. So that money...
2.7%.
What's that?
2.7%.
2.7% of that comes to us. The major proportion goes to both, 75% of that money goes to the school board and to the county. So, again, we're ready to go in with our half. I think that's fair enough. And we've been pushing this and putting a lot of time and effort, as, again, Bobby Wyatt, our engineers, going out and putting, getting other bids and doing a lot for it. So I would say, if you could help us by going to the county and asking them the same thing, I think that would be a fair request.
Anything else, council?
Well, that discussion went longer than I anticipated it, but I hope a lot of information was gathered. All right, we, there's not, and never has been, never has there been a commitment from the city to fix this. We were ready to go, and then all of a sudden, you're sent a bill for twice the dollar amount. And you are right. You are, you are citizens of our city, and it is your tax money that we spend, but we can't just shift 125,000. It's, something else has to give away, and that's what Mr. Wyatt's trying to figure out. He wants to get this done. I mean, we've wanted to get it done for two years.
Remember, with our contractors, the bill, you know, it's a little high bill, and then we can see if we can lower it down.
Well, Bobby, just, can you report back to the council by the end of the month?
Absolutely.
And I know how to get in touch, Mr. Cobb does, the SAC committee, we keep them in the loop as well. All right. Next item, let's see, the public comment portion is still open. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to our consent agenda. Tonight, it's very light. It's items five through eight. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Henkin.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented.
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Henkin, any questions?
No, sir, it looks great.
Councilwoman? Deputy Mayor?
Fine, sir.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Good, all righty. Hearing, no further questions. I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, public hearings. We do not have any this evening. So our next item up is item number 10, which is ordinance number 1641, signature events. Mr. Cobb, why don't you give us a brief introduction?
Actually, Mayor, we have the, have Mr. Group read the title.
Oh, you want me to read by title only first? Okay. Mr. Group, can you read that by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida relating to city signature events, amending section 2-291 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Oviedo, Florida, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for cosification, providing for the correction of scribblers' errors, and providing for conflict severability and an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the council to amend section 2-291 of the city's code of ordinances to revise the definition of a city signature event to clarify what types of events can be eligible for designation by city council. At your February 15, 2016, meeting, you discussed this very topic and directed staff to propose revisions to the definition. The staff has since researched how other cities throughout the country define their events, and we pulled the best, what we thought was the best, from different areas. This ordinance amends section 2-291, specifically amending the, the signature event definition. Currently, the, the definition reads, "A city signature event means events designated by such, as such, by resolution of the city council." And so that, that's basically all it said. This revision would revise the, revise the, the definition to say that a city signature event is a pre-planned annual event co-sponsored by the city by means of action by the city council with an individual or an organization serving as co-sponsor, in which an event is designated such by resolution of the city council, has been issued a special event permit by the city, has been held in the city on at least five occasions before being designated as a city, a signature event, has a duration of multiple days, including set-up and take-down days, with predetermined opening and closing dates and times, can result in activity impeding or impairing the normal flow of vehicles and pedestrians on streets or street, on a street or streets, sidewalks or other public facilities which are used primarily for travel or which, if yet, will require the partial closing or obstruction of a street, sidewalk, or public facility. It requires the necessity of public safety or traffic control measures not already provided at the proposed event or surrounding area, requires assistance from city departments before, during, and/or after the event. In other words, city, city staff will work the event. Is of a quality and scale to target and attract non-local visitors to the event area, thereby advancing the tourism or economic development goals of the city. Is held on city property at a city facility or within a public right-of-way, provided, however, that any event which has been designated a city signature event by adoption of resolution by the city council prior to the effective date of the ordinance shall not be subject to the requirements. Thus far, you have designated three signature events in the city. They are Great Day in the Country, Taste of Oviedo, and the Barbecue Blowout. And is open, then lastly, is open to the community at large and to all visitors to the event area. It is not, it, not a by invitation-only event, although such event may be one to which admission is charged. The city attorney has reviewed the proposed definition, and his inputs have already been included. The staff recommends adoption. It is recommended that city council schedule a public hearing for Monday, October the 3, 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for ordinance number 1641 on October 3, 2016, approximately 6:30 PM here at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, in the city council chambers.
Subsume. Second.
Motion second. Deputy Mayor, anything on this?
I don't, sir. Thanks for the hard work. Yes, delightful.
Councilman Henkin?
Yeah, we finally now have documents to pull back when everybody asks. I mean, it's very clear. I think you did good with that, Brian. Good.
Councilman Britton, anything?
I'm good.
Councilwoman?
Yes, I do wanna thank everyone. I think they did a good job on really defining the scope of signature events and the city events. I do have a request, though, of city, of the council, and before I do, I just wanna disclose that I am a member of the Oviedo Women's Club and the chair of Great Day in the Country. Great Day in the Country is a signature event, and we are moving to Oviedo on the park this year for the first time. It's a huge undertaking, and we've run across many, more expenses than we've thought. But we think this is gonna be a good event for the city, 'cause I've been wearing two hats doing this, watching out for the city interest, and then, of course, bringing Great Day on. So I would like to ask council if you would consider increasing the fees to be waived from $5,000 to $7,000 for any signature event that is held on city property, more specifically, or, or more specifically, at Oviedo on the Park. I think it would help to attract other big events to come in there, if the, if the price is raised, and encourage them to use our property and not somewhere else. And plus, it would help deter some of the personnel costs that they, we have, that you incur with a bigger city like, I mean, a bigger park like that.
Who made motion?
You did, didn't you?
I just wanna make sure. I'm like, okay. You know, I don't think I have a problem with that. I think the, there are increased cost, I mean, I know our costs to rent, et cetera. Brian, are we, we haven't finalized, I know we're looking at fees for like one day. We did do that.
Yes, sir.
They were net, and I'm thinking, well, we did have that net package, the half-day, the 411 packages. There are increased fees, you know, associated, again, as opposed to alternatives, that could be used and have been used. So, again, to have it there, it's not a guarantee that you can have it there. We have to, but there are some increased fees, but the benefits are there, too. So I could see going up, what is it, $2,000?
Yeah.
Specifically for, if it's, if it takes the entire of Oviedo on the Park and requires the entire, what is it, renting the entire, I don't know what it's worded as, in the fee structure, but if it includes the whole day, entire park structure, something like that. So they gotta amend it to, up to 7,000 if it includes the entire day at Oviedo on the Park.
Period of the event, it could be multiple days.
You got any wording issues on that, or how I should, I don't wanna...
The concept is, if, change it to $7,000, provided that the event is, occurs entirely, occupies the entirety of Oviedo on the Park for its duration, whether it's one day, two days, or three days.
Yeah, that's, that's, sounds like a great wording to me.
Okay. Second, or, oh, it's you, wasn't it?
Yeah. No, I agree. It'll bring more people out there to the signature place in the city, and it's, I have no issue. Councilman Schenk summed it up very well, and I can support that.
Councilman Britton?
Well, this is news to me, but I think the concept is, is good. We wanna showcase the park, so I think it's a good idea. I just wasn't prepared to really discuss the pros or cons of it tonight, but I guess I'll just go along with it.
Well, I kinda feel the way Councilman Britton does, to be honest. I mean, it's, it's nice to showcase the park. I just don't know if we're gonna trample the park. That's my fear, but I guess we'll see.
Well, we don't have to have an event, and that's why I said, you know, I thought the same thing. I said, well, we don't have to have an event there.
Yeah, well, let me, let me ask a further question, though. What, when, Brian, when these events are gonna be in Oviedo on the Park, what type of insurance or assurance do we have that if damage is created, is caused, the landscaping's trampled, the, whatever happens that's a direct result of, of whatever festivals there, that, that organizer's responsible for it? They have to provide us some sort of insurance bond, something?
They do provide liability insurance.
All right, that's liability. That does, that's not gonna cover the shrubs that get trampled. I mean, I don't mind giving up the extra dollars, but I think if folks are gonna start using Oviedo on the Park, and we don't have some sort of a bond, some sort of insurance, some sort of something that, that covers all the amenities in the park as well, I mean...
How does a little park do it for their art fest?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the reasons why, you know, certain venues in the city don't wanna host these big events. And by no means am I saying I don't want to do it. I just wanna figure out how we do it.
You know, Brian, on those liability certificates that groups would, would, would give the city for stuff, there's many options from those companies to add riders to them that are very inexpensive. So what the mayor's talking about, that could just be as simple as, okay, you have this, and the company that's, that's issuing those, I've seen lots of these, it's a, it's a very small fee to add riders to.
So, you guys understand, it says in here, "Any future signature events will be required to be held on city property, at a city facility, or within public right-of-way."
Right.
So these are gonna be on city, somewhere, on city property, all of these signature events.
And I don't have a problem with that. What I'm asking is, the taxpayers have made exceptional investments in the amenities, and how do we protect the amenities?
Oh, no, I'm with you.
That's all I'm saying. I mean, I'm trying, I'm picking on the women's club, barbecue club, I'm not picking on any of them. I'm just, it, it, it's an urban park. It's a more compact area, and if we have these large events there, and people are trampling through the shrubs, and they're getting destroyed, I, I just don't know how we prevent that.
Like I said, I think that should...
How do we, how do we prevent it from happening is, is, first off, or second off, how do we, you know, give, you know, give away seven grand to have it there, and then turn around and have $20,000 worth of damage to the park? I, I don't know. And the park can get damaged anytime. I get that.
Off the top of my head, I would say that we would include that as part of our invoice to the event organizer.
The damages clause as part of the contract that would have to be signed.
That, that's just off the top of my head, that, that would be, we, the way that it works now with signature events is that we calculate what our total costs are, and then we deduct 5,000 from that, and we send an invoice to the event organizer. That's what we do. And so, off the top of my head, I would say that that would be included into the invoice.
Neil, Brian, why don't you contact, I've been to a bunch of events at Winter Park, Central Park. Their art fest has thousands and thousands of people.
That's different.
And I've, you know, and I've go to runs there, and I don't see plants getting trampled too much. People tend to walk around, and if they see a bush, they walk around it. But I'm not sure how they do that. Maybe they absorb that cost, or, or use some other method. But it's, it's a good thing to look into, but I just don't know if it's, if it really happens that much.
That, that, that's fair. I was just, I'm just bringing it up.
Something, yeah, no, I think it's something we need to look into.
It's a much more compact park than some of the others. So that would be my only fear, you know?
But really, when you look at...
Again, and...
No, I'm saying, when you, when you look at these policies, that they give you these million-dollar policies, lots of people carry them. Musicians carry them, singers, anybody that comes to the park, they're, they're so inexpensive, and to add these riders to, you know, to add, you already have a million-dollar policy, and even that's not expensive, to add a little bit for, you know, trampling of...
Damages and beyond the normal.
It's really very insignificant. Cindy, when you have your board check, I'm sure you'll find out this is really not a bit. I, his point is well-taken, but for the groups that are coming in, it's not like, oh, my God, I gotta replace every bush. The insurance on it is very, very inexpensive.
And we have been communicating and working with Connie for the insurance purposes, because we found that coming, coming to Oviedo on the Park, there are some more liabilities that the insurance ones skyrocketed.
Yeah.
Because we're bringing it to the park. So, yeah, there's, there are a lot of issues, and Connie has been so kind and so patient with trying to work with our insurance people to get the right verbiage and to make sure that everybody is covered.
So Veronica, then, sort of.
Maybe we can have a little more, you know, if you look into, as Councilman Britton said, see, you know, see how, what they have at the art festival downtown, not the other one out in the fall one, is more in MLK Park. That's a little more wide open, but the one downtown, you know, see if, what their issues are and what they see. Because, again, it'll be very similar. We'll have, again, eventually we'll have stores there, storefronts, and different things set up. So what, what problems are, anything that they may, you can glean from it.
Yeah, and you know, when you have an American Idol winner come and sing in our park, and potentially could be thousands of people out there, too, the same should apply to them.
No, 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 this for everybody. This is, I meant all of them.
Yeah, I mean, this, you know, everybody.
Well, specifically for something like Great Day in the Country, are we looking at how we're gonna stage that? Are the booths gonna be more or less on the, on the roadway, or are they gonna be in the amphitheater grass?
It's all, it's all done.
They got it. It's all on the roadway. They're, they're all done.
Yeah, so I, you know, I don't see the, you know, I would be worried about the amphitheater sitting area getting trampled and tore up, but if that's not gonna be the thoroughfare for foot traffic, maybe...
No. Councilman Britton, we have met several times... No, Councilman Britton, we have met several times with the two chiefs and all the department heads and really have worked everything out as the best we can. Now, we will have hiccups the first time, of course, that will have to be looked at and addressed for next year, but, you know, they have been wonderful. They come up with, to look at the map and look at the whole program, the way people will come on, the vendors will set up, they've looked at all that and gave us some good suggestions that we changed, and so we're, we're working within the framework of the suggestions of all the department heads, especially the chiefs. So that has been worked out. Yes, the vendors are going to go from Oviedo Boulevard all the way over to Boardwalk and actually down City Plaza also. It's going to be big.
Okay.
It's going to be big. And, you know, we worked on the traffic and the road closing and getting people in, getting people out. There's been a lot of meetings, you know, organizing for it.
Well, that's what we built it for, to be used.
I've seen them walk in the streets many times. Her and Regina walk in the streets of Oviedo on the Park a lot.
With our measuring stick.
I don't mind the council walking, but that Regina first. They're all going to walk in the street.
Anyway, just, and it's not just their event, it's all, just, you know, how do we protect ourselves?
Protect, yes.
I'm not asking that, you know, they put up, you know, $50,000 with the cash in the account, it's just, there's an option out there, let's look at it. All right, anything else? Seems like we have consensus to raise it to $7,000. Everyone's on board with that.
That would be $7,000 for events at Center Lake Park.
At Center Lake Park.
Okay.
And only if the event requires the entire park, not, you know, they're going to take a little portion and...
Yeah.
However you want to word it.
Do you also want to add a signature event?
Well, it is for a signature, only for the signature events.
Yes, sir. It'd only be for signature events.
All right. Anything else from anybody? Everybody's good on this?
Thank you.
All right. With that being said, I'll call the vote with the increase to $7,000 on the fees and the language that we all discussed. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we have a public hearing scheduled for Monday, October 3rd, for a second reading of this with some minor tweaks to it. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Let's see, resolutions, we have none. We have one discussion item, item number 12. It is an appointment to the firefighter pension board. So, Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir. The city council has asked to appoint one of the city council appointments to the firefighters' Pension Trust Fund Board of Trustees. The position, it expires on September 30th of this year. There was a search, one candidate resulted, which happens to be our incumbent candidate, Stefan Young, and the council has asked to reappoint Mr. Young to the board.
Where does the pleasure of counsel?
Makes motion to reappoint Stefan Young as the...
It doesn't even sound like I have to call the vote, but second, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominees other than the one that's in here?
It still works here, chief.
All right, we have, Stefan Young is nominated. Any other nominations before I close? Nominations are closed. All those in favor of Stefan Young, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Cobb, we're up to your report.
No report, Mayor.
Oh. Mr. Groot?
I'm quiet, too, Mr. Mayor.
What?
I'm quiet on the western front.
No, I got two, I have two quick questions. I received an email from the school district today. I guess there is a committee that Councilman Schenck sits on. What's it called?
It's got a black name, but it's about, it's the facilities committee.
Yeah, and they said that since you're not sitting on it anymore, that there's a lot of mayors that sit on it, and they wanted me to come sit on it.
The, they're looking at a meeting date in late November.
16.
So I said to them, you know, I'm not going to be here, I think I told Brian, but I said, you know, you're going to have to appoint someone to sit on that board.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up. They did ask, I mean, I don't mind going on it. I think we gave it to Councilman Schenck because he was with, doing Galileo in the school thing. All those in favor of the mayor?
Aye.
All right, there we go. You don't want to do it?
No.
You sure?
That's right up your alley.
No, it's...
Why don't you, when you get up there, lobby for a driveway?
That's what I'm going to do.
There you go. Mayor, actually, you did...
It almost sounds like something that I'll be giving up to a new member.
Mayor, you did jog my memory when you said "school district." They also have a, they're doing a impact fee study, and they need a representative from Oviedo. It could be anybody, but they would like us to recommend a representative from Oviedo.
Do you have a staff person that you'd like to have involved in that?
I think they want a citizen or an elected official, one of the two. I'm not sure if any of our staff members are citizens.
Who do you need then?
They haven't, they've just asked.
All right, so get some more specific, you know, get more specific on it, and maybe we'll see if there's a citizen who wants to do it.
Citizens are too, let me think of... One of those ladies that were just up there might be interested in.
There you go.
Call one back in, and it's got to be...
One other quick question, and Brian, I'll ask this of you, I mentioned it earlier. We got questioned on a flashing light in front of our firehouse, and I hadn't heard anything about it. Our firehouse was built without a flashing light, and now I guess the county's telling us we need a flashing light, or, Chief, did you request a flashing light? Because that was the implication I was given. I'll let Mr. Cobb answer.
Yeah, no, it's, I need to do it. Back in January, when we were walking in the Martin Luther King Memorial Parade, Councilman Delary asked us to prepare a list of items that could be funded by the county. And we brainstormed and brainstormed, and through the budget process, we developed a list of capital items that could be funded by the county, and there was a wide range of things that we put in there.
What were on there, things on there?
And the signal in front of the fire station was one of them, an emergency signal in front of the fire station, and that happened to be the one project that he grasped on. I believe that he met with Chief White, with the county transportation engineer, at the fire station. Our, as I think I'm safe to say, between the two of us, was that the county was going to pay for the signal.
It's their road, as we were throwing at us earlier. Is it their road?
Exactly, it's state road.
It's state road. But they were going to pay for the signal, and that was, that's how, that was how we believed things were going to happen.
We need the stenchdom ladies to come back in and hear this one.
And we learned, we received an email from the county public works director wanting to know how we were going to fund our fair share. I think Mr. White was about $70,000?
That was a full share.
No, that's a full share.
Our fair share always needs a full share.
Of this signal, and we redirected the county public works director to Mr. Delary's office. That's what we did.
So what is, what is our fair share? What are they asking for? Do we know?
Should be zero.
Zero, it's a state road.
Is it a requirement? Or a nice-to-have?
It's a nice-to-have.
I'm being told it's a requirement.
It was not included in the original...
Chief, why don't you come on up here? I'm sorry.
All right. It's an easy question. Is it a requirement? That's all. Isn't it any...
Well, and then, if it's not a requirement and it's a nice-to-have, what is our fair share?
The other question is, did the old one have a light?
Well...
And why wouldn't, why wouldn't it be replaced as part of the taking?
The old one did not have a true traffic signal, but you had parallel pairs down at that location. We did have a component down there, an opti-com controlled component with a push button in the base, that we could control that main intersection. We will experience some traffic issues during peak load conditions in front of the station. It hasn't been detrimental to us, our staff said everything has been fine thus far. It's a nicety, it's not a statutory requirement or anything on my side with state fire marshal's office that mandates that. It's more a matter of safety. In the dedication, ribbon-cutting, Mr. Delary had asked, again, anything we can do. We said, well, signal would be nice.
And I understand that Bob wants to help and, you know...
Yeah. We weren't expecting something actually this quickly. It was one of those down-the-road kind of things, perhaps.
Chief, does the one down on 419 and 48 help the guys better? I mean, like I said, it's a nicety to have.
It is, but you got to look at the demographics. That's a highway with a median, it's, you know, a school across the street.
Right.
As Bobby will tell you, there's a lot of peculiarities to each design.
Yeah.
I was quite shocked when the estimate came in at $70,000. That was mostly unheard of. That's very low, but we think they're repurposing some mast arms from a different location. They assured us they were black in color and those kind of things.
Can we find out what they're expecting as our fair share, and then maybe let the council know before?
Yes.
But do you know already, Bobby? Come on up.
$70,000, hold it. This can do.
That is pretty inexpensive.
County Public Works Director essentially sent me an invoice for $70,000, which is all parts and pieces to construct, but they were going to use, as Chief said, used material. So repurpose some of the mast arms.
So 70 is our portion, or 70 is the total?
70 is the total, from my understanding.
And they want, what, 50% of it from us?
No, they want all of it from us. They were going to provide the materials they had to supply. We're paying the labor, pretty much.
Right, my understanding is...
And that's, that's still, even though it's used equipment, it's still probably a decent share.
It wouldn't, yeah, the county, they've got a ton of those jobs, they wouldn't, I, you know...
All right, can we just, why don't we verify everything and send it out to the council and figure out if you guys really want this?
Yeah, I'm more concerned about how it looks, where it's going to be on that side street, you know, again, if we're going to start, that roadway in that area is going to start having, looking nicer with other, then do we want to put up a, no offense.
I understand, that's just the sig, that's not...
Oh, I know, yeah, right.
Aesthetic.
Yeah, it's just one of those little...
It's flasher.
...lighting, the fire trucks coming... A mast arm would light the blinks, yeah. I said all the mast arms around there that may possibly change and things like that.
But not to stop the traffic, though, just a blinking light.
He would stop them.
When you guys want, when you guys want to stop it, I need to make it full, right? Yes. Right, okay. Might need some, what's that, spill-over shade lighting, not getting Councilman Schenck's new window or yours changed, too?
I want, I want you to aim it at his window, then I'll vote for him. All right, guys, get all the information, let us know. I didn't mean to bother everybody with that, but I got called on it today. That's all I got. Deputy Mayor, your...
Hometown showdown tomorrow night at Hagerty High School. That's it. That's it. I said, I said both, named both, I specifically had both schools game when I just said that there.
Councilman Harkin, your...
Good luck to both schools, and we wish them all a good game, and that's all I have.
I'll be wearing green tomorrow night, exactly.
Yeah, wearing one's jersey and one's hat doesn't work out very well. I always tried to wear the home team's shirt and the visiting team's hat. It just, doesn't work.
It's a nice new color.
No, I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Yeah, I guess blue and orange would make great. Last but not least, our Calno member. Do we have a Calno update, please?
We did. We had a good meeting last night, and it, coincidentally, it was on affordable housing, and a fellow, Todd Wind of, I want to call it Piscern Development Group, they build these affordable housing complexes, and it was very informative in the context of what we're going on with Fontana and what we've done in the past. So I've got the presentation here. Brian, you might want to have him come and talk to you and get some background on how that process works and why we get into the situations we get into. It was very interesting to me. It's not necessarily a bad program, but I gave them our, our take on some of the things that have happened to us and some of the abuses, and they seem to have that program pretty well intact. It's not a, not a bad concept.
Is it homes or apartments?
It's apartments, like Fontana. I mentioned our program with Chief Chudnow on crime prevention.